Called order in meeting of the moderate for this water management district regular scheduled meeting for March fifteenth, twenty twenty one, time six oh two. Roll call vote please, roll call.
Yes, Mayor Roberson. Mayor Roberson. Director Adams.
Here.
Director Anderson.
Here.
Director Malik.
Here.
Director Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul.
Here.
Let me go back to Director Roberson.
Yes, I'm here. I was having trouble unmuting. Thank you.
Okay, and finally Chair Edwards.
Here.
Chair Edwards, let the record reflect that all directors are present.
Thank you. Okay, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God,
individual.
liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, any, any additions and corrections to the agenda?
There are none.
Well, I have one. And it's going to take place right after we fix it. All communications. All communication. I like to add all communication to the agenda. I make a motion, we add all communication to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a second by Director Riley. I know we shouldn't have any public comment on this, but you can ask Joel before we take the vote.
Okay, so for those who are participating on your electronic device, please signal to me by raising your hand that you would like to make public comment at this time. For those who are calling in, make sure that you push star nine. Director Edwards, I do not see anybody with their hands raised.
Okay. We'll do a roll call vote please.
All right, good to go. Director Roberson.
I.
Director Adams.
I.
Director Anderson.
I.
Director Malik.
I.
Director Riley.
I.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Director Edwards.
Yes.
The motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
All right, seven to zero. Thank you. Okay, next item will be all communication. Anyone wish to address the board on consent calendar, information items, close session items, or matters not listed on the agenda may do so only during oral communication. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The public may comment on all other items at the time they are presented. Okay, Joel, please open up all communication.
Okay, so at this time, if you would like to make public comment, please signal to me by raising your hand that you would like to make public comment. Again, if you're dialing in by phone, push star nine. Director Edwards, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I take that, would you like to, you haven't closed public comment, are you okay?
No, I haven't, I haven't hit my hand yet. Go ahead, open it up.
Right, so I see Anna Thompson on the line here. Before she makes public comment, let me go ahead and start my timer here. And then Anna, when you're ready, please present your comment. Anna, you're.
Okay.
Anna? You're muted.
I'm muted, okay. Okay now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh yeah.
Okay, good, thank you. Good evening Chair and Board members. This is Anna Thompson. I would like to make the comment about last week's workshop. Is it okay?
Yes.
I was able to join in only for a very short time. During that time, the subject of trust came up. I do not think you have a trust problem. I think the problem is having to deal with Calham, whose interests conflict with our public interests. Calham stands to make a lot of money if their proposed dis-sell plan is built. Therefore, Calham has done a good job convincing many individuals that it's the sell plant is the only viable alternative and refuses to consider the facts. Anyone that contradicts Calham's false claims accused of being against water or growth. If you did not know any better, you would think that Calham actually cares about the health of the Carmel River, meeting our water supply needs, economic growth, and development of affordable houses. More so than we do. My questions to you really are, as I understand it, there are some overlapping functions between this agency and Calham. How do you resolve any possible conflict? Two, do you have any authority or a way to make Calham agree to buy the water produced by the Pure Water Monterey expansion? Three, if Calham were to succeed in getting the permit to propose this sale, who would be liable for any subsequent damage posed by the dis-sell? Would it be the responsibility of the ratepayers or the corporation? Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
All right, Director Edwards, I do not see any members of the public with their hands raised. I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. All communication is closed. Next item, consent calendar. Any board members want anything, pull from consent calendar. From the, go ahead, Director Brown.
I'd like to pull item one for just a simple comment, and not substantive, but important.
Okay, one, okay, any other items, any other board members? Okay, you, you wanted.
I think, I think it ought to be what, no, it's going to take a couple of comments, that's all. I think it ought to be discussed and then.
Okay, one to a couple of them. Okay, Joel, ask anybody in the public, do they want to pull anything from consent calendar?
Okay, those joining in, please raise your hand if you would like to make public comment on items one through four on the consent calendar. Director Edwards, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. All right, do I have a motion to approve two, three, and four?
I move.
Okay, from Director Adams.
Second.
Second from Director Malik. Okay, roll call vote please.
Director Riley.
I.
Director Adams.
I.
Director Roberson.
I.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
I.
Vice Chair Paul. Vice Chair Paul.
Your meal.
Sorry, yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, seven to zero. All right, Director Riley.
On item one, there are the minutes, and it's a general pattern of how they're presented, and I'm just asking, I'm going to ask a question, and I don't want an answer, but I would, I would like to have somebody just kind of think about this. The format of the minutes show the item, then the action, then the public comments. And our action always occurs after public comments. So I'm wondering if the sequence ought to be the item, public comments, and then the action of the board. It just flows the way the meeting flowed, but the may, the way the minutes are presented, it shows the action, you know, ahead of public comment. I'd just like to see the sequence changed, and I don't know if that's, if there's a Roberts Rules of Order issue here, I don't know if there's anything legal, but I just think it's, it's a practical piece of it. And I'm only suggesting that that be thought about. I'm looking, not looking for any action yet or even any response. I move approval of item one, the minutes.
Okay, we have approval to move item one, Director Anderson.
I second his motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, and we have a second. Now, check with the public, Joel.
I will do that, Director Edwards. At this time, if you would like to make public comment on item number one, now is your opportunity to do so. Director Edwards, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you. Let's do a roll call vote.
Director Riley.
I.
Director Adams.
I.
Director Roberson.
I.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
Yes.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
I.
The motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item, General Manager's report.
Yes, thank you. We have a presentation that Joel will pull up and screen share.
Can I have that?
Right. Great, next slide, or go ahead and start the slideshow.
Carrying the wrong screen, give me a second.
Yeah. Well, while we're waiting for it to come up, I just want to preface this by saying we're in the first year of Pure Water Monterey water deliveries. And so some of the charts are going to look a little odd when compared to the prior year because water's been moved from one location to the other. So next slide, please. And here's where you'll begin to see it kind of straight up. This is just the Monterey Peninsula Water Resource System, primarily withdrawals from the river and from Seaside Basin. So where you see on the bottom line, twenty twenty actual from the river was thirty one hundred. Now it's eighteen hundred. Well, the reason for that is we're, we have increased reliance on Pure Water Monterey water, which you'll see in the second slide. So trying to gain any insight from looking at the furthest column, the right-hand column, where you can see actual to date is two thousand seven hundred and eighteen. But the only insight you can pull away from this chart is that it's lower than the target, so we're within budget. But comparing it to actual from last year is somewhat meaningless. Next slide, please. So, next slide. Oh, wait, you have it. No, no, you have it. Go back, sorry. Didn't advance right away on my screen. Here's where you see where Pure Water Monterey comes into the equation. Sand City D cell, we continue to budget the same way that we have in the past, and it continues to somewhat underperform. We've had that conversation several times, and I think until we determine what the outcome's going to be for its moving of its intake wells, we'll continue to budget at full amount and we'll just take whatever actual is produced. There was a little bit of tables thirteen water right that was allocable in February. That seventeen acre feet, so that was a bit of a surprise. But next slide, this is the basically deliveries for customer service, which is our equivalent to consumer demand. And the nice thing here is the year-to-date, which is now five months under our belt, is about a hundred and thirty-six acre feet below last year-to-date, which is a positive signal, especially with the positive rain that we've had. You know, it's still winter, so people haven't offset rainfall with, you know, their hose bib for irrigation, but so it still looks, it looks pretty good, a hundred and thirty-six acre feet. You know, we're comparing now to a period that was already under COVID, so there's not, you know, kind of a disjuncture in the, in the data. So it's looking pretty good. Next slide. This is rainfall. Not much change from last month. But you will see on the next slide, please draw, that not reflected in that previous slide is what just happened this week in, in March. And you see down at the bottom, a little bit of blue, about a half an inch, and then less than a half an inch. We did get something, so there's still hope. March is not over yet. It actually rained intermittently just for an hour this afternoon. And we did have rain in April last year. Next slide, this is unimpaired flow. Similar to the rain chart, it's, February was significantly below average. January was significantly below average, and we're starting off on March below average. So we're not you know, sounding the drought alarm, but it's highly unlikely that we will pull back into normal or below normal. But, you know, let's wait and see what happens with the rest of March. Next slide. So I want to shift our attention a little bit to what we learned from the data at the end of the water year. This has already been seen by the Water Demand Committee, so I apologize if it's repetitive for a few of you, but I think it's very useful for the public as well as our other directors who have not yet seen it. So this is water demand by use. Not much change from what we would normally expect. It's always about sixty-six to sixty-nine percent residential. And in this case, the orange and the gray slices of the pie are single-family, multifamily residential. The remainder being commercial, public authority, recreational, and so forth. Now, how does that, this is an odd slide, it didn't, it did come through, okay, good. Next slide, please. So who uses it? City of Monterey, about thirty-two percent. The unincorporated county at thirty percent. Seaside at fourteen percent, and Pacific Grove at thirteen percent. So you would think that that is consistent with population, but it actually isn't. Unincorporated County picks up quite a bit of, well, you know, all the Carmel Valley, but also Pebble Beach and, you know, some other aspects to it. But other than that, yeah, it's pretty much by, by size. Next slide. So this is total water demand as measured by production for delivery to customer service. So similar to the chart we looked at earlier, but on an annual basis. And as you can see, last year again was below the prior years. And we, but we seem to have kind of bottomed out. I won't say it's gone completely flat, you know, obviously last year was below the prior year, which was also below its prior year. But generally speaking, the last five to six years have kind of all been within the same range. So we have seen a decline from the late eighties and mid nineties. Next slide, please. And this is maximum month, which is usually July or August. Occasionally in the history, it has been June. This shows a similar trend, which is a flattening in recent years, but primarily an overall reduction from the mid two thousands. So what that means is we've been shaving the peak, so to speak, that you don't see as high a demand in July and August relative to the other months that we used to. Next slide. So this is a, a chart of residential and non-residential use the last two years. So dark blue is residential last year. Light blue is, I've got to be careful when I say last year. The most recent year is the dark blue, and then the light blue is residential the prior year. And same with the orange. Dark orange is the most recent closed-out water year, and light orange is the prior year. And what I wanted you to see is the blue bars are relatively close, the trend line is about the same, except following March. And this is where you can see that the non-residential use dropped significantly, and residential use in the most recent year actually went up. And that trend carries through May, June, July, August, and September. That's, in our opinion, that's the COVID nineteen effect, that commercial lags, except in July, and we'll talk about July and July and August actually a little bit. But you can see the orange bars, the darker orange lags, the lighter orange quite a bit. And that's the impact that COVID had on our commercial establishments primarily. And you can see that residential use is higher than prior years. And then July and August come along, and it's even more significant that residential is much higher. Yet, commercial came back a little bit, or non-residential came back a little bit. And that's our belief that if people were going to shelter in place, we had a lot of folks from Texas and Fresno and all the other really hot places come and stay in the, you know, the second home market in Carmel and PG and elsewhere. The restaurants were serving outdoors, and so that you had a little bit of a bump, if you will, in the commercial sector during the summer, and certainly a bigger bump in the residential sector. And you can see this again in the next slide, which is normalized, so just as, you know, as a percent residential and non-residential use. And it shows really kind of the same thing, that towards the latter half of the year, the orange or non-residential as a percent of the total was in, in decline, or was less than a typical year in two thousand nineteen. And again, that's probably the COVID effect, that it shifted water use from the commercial sector to the residential sector. So I thought you'd find that of interest. We get this kind of data about once a year, so it's very difficult to track on a monthly basis until the whole water year is over. But that concludes my report on item five. With respect to item six, there's not much to report other than you do have an item on the agenda today for approving monies that could lead to a certification of the SEIR for Pure Water Monterey Expansion. The Pure Water Monterey first phase is moving along quite well with the addition of deep well number three and deep well number four, which are currently underway. On the D cell project, Calham submitted a hundred and eighteen-page letter addressing the incomplete notification it received back in November. The letter did not address all the items of the incomplete notice by the Coastal Commission, but addressed quite a few of them. And it appears that Calham continues to expect to resubmit an application to the Coastal Commission sometime this summer. And we've wrapped up the ASR chemical building project and are just basically cleaning up. There is a well rehab on ASR well number one that's almost complete, awaiting a part. So ASR looks good. We could inject if there was sufficient water to inject, but that most recent rain didn't allow the river to meet our, our various permit requirements. So apart from that, just under seventy acre feet that we injected earlier in the year, we, these most recent rains did not trigger new injection. And that concludes my update on water supply projects. Now, this last item, item seven, I believe now everyone has seen the application to the State Water Board and the cover letter. All of this activity was approved by the board, and we got a little bit of a delay through the election season and the holiday season, but now we're, we're pretty much there. We filed the application, which is shown as exhibit seven A on Tuesday with the cover letter, which is seven B. We've made all of the information available to all of the mayors and city managers for their use in developing letters of support, or whatever, engaging their own planning departments. We've shared it with California American Water. We've shared it with some NGOs like Land Watch and Monterey Bay Economic Partnership, United Way, Mid Penn Housing, among others. I have spoken with, with State Board Representative who says that it's complete. We did a revision, you may have noticed, you got one copy in the morning and a different copy in the afternoon. And that was just to change the caption and better clarify that we are the sole applicant. And, and State Boards confirmed that it's acceptable, and it's in the process, and they're going to try to figure out what to do with it and stay engaged with us. So I think we're all pretty excited that it's out there and that it's now going to get some consideration. I do know that we, we should expect a number of letters of support for this initiative that will be coming in in the next couple of weeks. So all looks good, and I'm happy to take any questions on this particular item if you have them after reviewing your packet.
Any questions from board members? Go ahead, Director Brown.
Dave, I have three quick questions. I'm not looking for dissertation. Between title thirteen and ASR, the trigger for either one, is it the same trigger, a level of flow in the river?
Yeah, it's similar. So the, the permit that we have for ASR wells one and two differs from the permit we have for ASR wells three and four. They're both seasonal, and the table thirteen water rights have a, have a similar seasonality to them. You know, I don't know if John's on the line, if you can tell me if the table thirteen water rights triggers are different than the, either of the ASR.
Right. You, you've, you've already, you've already given me part of the answer. Even ASR has two triggers. And, and if title, that, that's enough. I didn't know whether they were the same or not. Now I know.
And the triggers vary if the lagoon is open versus when the lagoon is closed.
Okay.
The month you're in and so forth, so.
Okay, I'll, I'll get back to that. My second question is, in terms of the conservation chart you had, which was the water demand number that was just declined down to, you know, nine thousand acre feet or so, has there ever been a study on the impact of the steep rate structure versus rebates? I mean, I'm assuming the rate structure has something more. And has there ever been a study of that? I, I'm going to assume not, but I don't know.
Yeah, there, the elasticity, price elasticity has been looked at. It's hard to hone in specifically. It's hard to hone in specifically and say that the steeply tiered rate structure equates for this much savings since the date that it was imposed. That it's just very challenging, and different parties have done different studies of the price elasticity. So it's been looked at. It's not conclusive, but there's clearly an impact.
Well, and I would assume price elasticity would, would be the major impact. My, my, my third question has to do with your item number seven on the housing initiative. If we're successful in removing the, or getting the authorization for the water supply, I mean, the, the, the the free, freeing up some water. If that happens, can that decision by the State Water Board release the city of Monterey and the developer from the whole harmless requirements of the district?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's, that's pretty much the goal, is to take that shroud of concern over condition two away. I mean, you could get sued over other things, but.
Okay, no. But, but, but that's good.
If I may respond further, the state board does not have the authority to release the condition. The, this board would have that authority, and the reason for that may well be contained within the state board's action. But the state board itself cannot release the condition of, of, of the indemnification.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, so there's some clarity going forward. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm being, and I'm being told that I'm remiss, that I need to mention once again that we are in the midst of fix a leak week. And on everybody's to-do list this week to monitor for leaks. The district has a media campaign, social media campaign, which means most of us on this call have not seen it. That includes advertisements as well. Well, you'll see, you'll see the branding ad on Thursday and Friday in the. But we are on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook this week, daily on Twitter and Facebook, so. Yay us, and go fix your leaks.
Okay, director Adams.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, what is the process now for the State Water Resources Control Board to respond? Does it have to be like a formal amendment to the CDO?
Yeah, that's what they were kind of looking into towards the end of last week. What are the ex parte communication rules, if any? Will it go to a hearing? The, the way it's written is that the Deputy Director of Water Rights has the authority to make some health and safety concern interpretations. But it's unclear if that's what they will do or choose to do. So we don't know the process yet. But they will let us know.
Any other questions from the GM? If none, thank you. Next item. Report from District Council.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The board did have a closed session at 5:00 PM this evening. There was one item on the agenda, and that was to confer with District Council to review a single matter of potential anticipated litigation. The board was provided with a status report to review the circumstances behind this matter. And the board did provide general direction to its staff and council, but there was no reportable action taken. That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Okay, the directors' report, including AB one, two, three, four, reports on trips, conferences, attendance, and meetings. Any board members have any, anything? Any comments? Okay, thank you. The chair will make a few comments. First off, I know something I asked for something to be put on the agenda about responding to the State Water Board. That would have been hailed off for a little bit, thanks to Mayor Roberson, getting a letter from the mayors to send up there. And I'd like Mayor Roberson to speak on that right now, if he, if he may.
Yes, it, it's my pleasure to do that. As you may recall, our outstanding chair, Alvin Edwards, at our last meeting, asked for some support from the district mayors, that would be six of us, in support of the letter that the water district, the Water Management District had about relief from this, the milestone in the CDO of a one thousand acre foot penalty. And not only had the Water Management District written a letter, Pebble Beach Company had also written a letter to the State Water Resources Control Board, and I had, as an individual mayor, done the same thing. So at the urging of our chair, I contacted our six Monterey District mayors, and we created a letter which has been sent. There are four signatures, and with your forbearance, Chair, I, I could read this letter if I may.
Oh, yes, sir.
All right, and the letterhead is the Monterey Peninsula Mayor's care of Monterey City Hall. And the email reference, email letter, email contact is mine. And it was sent to four members of the State Water Board, including the Executive Director. And it reads to wit, and thank you for forbearing with me. "We Monterey Peninsula mayors are writing you in support of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District Letter of December twenty-third. We respect, respectfully ask that the milestone be delayed since significant progress is being made in getting the peninsula off the Carmel River and outside factors interfered with the meeting of the milestone. The milestone was not met because of the delayed Coastal Commission hearings and Superior Court rulings. Nevertheless, the Pure Water Monterey Advanced Water Purification Project is now delivering water to the seaside basin and significantly offsetting reliance on the river. Most importantly, the district residences and businesses have dramatically reduced their water consumption, relieving dependence on the Carmel River. Indeed, the peninsula is a role model of conservation." As noted in a separate letter from the Pebble Beach Company, quote, "In sum, the material delays caused both by the Coastal Commission staff and by order of the Monterey Superior Court were clearly and undeniably beyond Calam's and other applicants' control. We ask for the privilege of participating in a factual hearing before the SWRCB board on this decision. Thank you for your consideration. Signed by the following mayors, Allison Kerr, Delray Oaks, Ian Oglesby, Seaside, Dave Potter, Carmel by the Sea, Clyde Roberson, Monterey."
And Mayor, I'll, I'll just give your staff a note of thanks. Nat and Hans decided to dress it up a little bit and put the logos of each of the seals of each city across the top letterhead and improve the signature block, so. Kudos to them for doing so.
Yeah, and I think it was important to point out, this does not come from our city councils, but it comes from four specific mayors who have been heavily impacted by the milestone. And so I again thank the chair for encouraging us to do so. And when we get a response, obviously we'll share it with everyone.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I'd like the Director GM, General Manager, to send an email out or a letter to each one of the mayors and thanking them for helping out with this matter. Okay, my next item will be, we had our strategic planning session on March twelfth, the first part of it, on March twelfth. It should be aired coming this following Monday on, on what we did in strategic planning. On March twenty-sixth, from nine AM to twelve, we'll be doing our second portion of the strategic planning session. So if you want to join us, it'll be coming out on those matters, so please do. And my last item is that's it. So. Next item. You getting into business now? Public hearings, GM. You on milk there, GM?
I'm going to call on John Lear. This is one of our four times a year that we go through the quarterly water budget.
Thanks, thanks, Dave. Chair Alvin Edwards and members of the board, good evening. And Joel, if you could pull up item nine presentation, and we can go through that.
I'm here. Just give me a second while I bring that up.
Thank you. So this is public hearing item nine on the agenda tonight, and it is to bring forth to you the quarterly water budget for the time period of April to June twenty twenty-one. And this for members of the board that have not seen this before, the district dating back to the eighties meets with California American Water Staff, Operations Staff, Department of California Fish and Wildlife, the NOAA Fisheries Group, as well as the State Water Rights Board. And we meet quarterly to discuss how to best develop a water budget that will be produce the amount of water needed for the peninsula from the sources that are available to produce in a way that is legal with all of the state board orders that put restrictions on how water can be produced out of the water resource system, as well as strategize the way to do it in the most environmentally responsible manner to causally stress on the natural system. So if we could advance the slide. Thank you. So as we stated, there are a number of state board orders listed in the first bullet, as well as the seaside groundwater adjudication decision that hits the limits that we can produce out of the seaside groundwater basin. And these are all adopted annually into what we call the Rule one sixty targets, which adopts the total amount of water that's to be used in the water year. And then we have these quarterly check-ins and plans, so. For this next quarter, the proposed plan is the ASR for ASR operations. As Dave stated earlier, we did start injecting on the twenty-eighth in response to the rainfalls we received in the late January storms, but then the river fell off very fast because we had not had a lot of previous rainfall, and all of the water seeped into the ground, recharging the aquifer, which is good, but the flows diminished on February second and fell below permitted targets, and we ceased injection. And we sit waiting and ready for more rains. And as Dave had said last year, we had got April rains, and we actually were able to harvest about five hundred and fifty acre feet in the last part of the water year. So we'll be ready if, if the late rains come, and we'll be hoping we get some of them. Table thirteen diversions will also be ready to be counted if we do hit the flow triggers for those, but they're in the same story as the ASR sitting and waiting. In Pure Water Monterey, Monterey operations, we have now stabilized at injecting about three hundred acre feet per month. Drilling of DIW three continues, and four is also being staged and is under, is under project moving forward. So if we could advance the slide. So this water budget has a number of assumptions in it. We assume that we will use all of the seaside basin coastal subarea native groundwater during the water year twenty twenty-one. We assume that ASR injection in table thirteen diversions are probably little to minimum if we don't get any more rains, and it's, that was consistent with other years, similar rainfall patterns, as well as when we look at the NOAA climate prediction for the next three months. It assumes if storms stop early spring, the river will go drop below the threshold, which we enter into what is termed the low flow period in one of the state board orders, which also determines how water is produced out of Carmel Valley. And this quarterly water budget was developed on March fifth. And then to remind everybody again, the group is MPWMD, Calam, California Division of Fish and Wildlife, United States Fish and Wildlife Services, and, and the State Water Resources Board. So if we could advance the slide. This is the next three months precipitation prediction. So we, we, our area is in the white, so it means that there, there is no anomalies where you would expect it to be wetter than normal or drier than normal. So if we could have a situation where we get low pressure zone forms, and we start to get some precipitation. But there, the outcast is, there is no anomalies of wet or dry. So if we could advance the next slide. So to remind everybody, these are the Rule one sixty targets that were adopted previous, and these are the numbers that for the entire system, and we are focusing in on the April, May, June. And we are, as, and these are also the numbers that Dave reports against to show how we're doing as we, as we budget these out and produce from these, all these sources. Next slide, please, Joel. So here is the actual budget that was discussed and agreed upon in that meeting. The way that these tables read is we have the months across the top, and then in the columns, we have all of the sources of water, being the Carmel Valley Aquifer and, and the seaside groundwater basin, and the projects of water rights that exist in each of those areas, and then the amount of water subject, subject to production to meet demand, as well as grouped on the bottom, what uses, what use it will be used for, whether it's to meet customer service or to support ASR injections. So if water is to be in diverted out of the river and moved over to seaside for injection, it will show up as ASR injection in the use column. So as you can see, we've forecasted some, about a hundred and fifty, if we were to, based on a normal water year and what we would normally harvest. If this were to be a type of a drier type water year. And again, hopefully, we will see those rains going to be able to operate. But what we see here is production out of the lower units of the, of the Carmel Valley lubium and the, and the Calam wells, moving into the low flow trigger, which will bring production out of the upper valley down to zero, according to the state board orders. And then with or without some ASR diversion, you get the totals for the Carmel Valley as you move through the months in, in the bold section of the table. Seaside groundwater basin, you have the ability to pump seaside native water or to recover ASR water, to produce water from the San City Desalination Plant, or to recover Pure Water Monterey. So as we move through these months that are lower demand, the plan for April and May is to produce more out of the river when there's more water in the river, and the state board orders allow production out of the river. With the prediction that the low flow trigger may happen sometime in May, we move into June and the production will shift away from the river, but you see in the number going from five eighteen to two sixty-six. And the demand will be met by ramping up recovery of Pure Water Monterey, thus shifting, pumping away from the river in the time when the river is drying back and is more sensitive to the pumping. And so then this, can you advance the next slide? So the recommendation from staff and the quarterly water budget is to accept and adopt the proposed water supply strategy and budget for the main system for the third quarter of water year twenty twenty-one, which again is April to June twenty twenty-one. And with that, that concludes my presentation, Chair.
Thank you. Any more questions? Any more questions? Any more questions? Okay, just one for me. When you talk about pure water Monterey, we're not actually getting that water yet, right?
Yes, that is correct. The actual pure water Monterey water has shown up in the tracer test at the wells that are halfway point between the injection wells and districts ASR well. So it's about halfway to the ASR well. So when those wells are producing water, they're not producing water of the quality of the injected water.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Joel, let's take it out to the public and see if we have any public comment on this item.
Yes, good evening all. If you have a public comment for item number nine, please raise your hand from Zoom or dial star nine from your phone. For those calling in, I will identify you by the last three digits of your phone number. In addition, if you're calling in and watching on your electronic device, please turn down the volume to limit any feedback that may be transmitted when you speak. So going over to the attendee side. I do not see anybody who wishes to make a public comment at this time. So I'll return this back to the board, Chair Edwards.
Thank you, Joel. Back to the board, Mayor Robertson. Robertson.
That's okay. Everybody calls me Mayor Clyde, so that's fine. Hey, I was in the report, which was very good. By the way, you you said that pure water Monterey is producing 300 acre feet per month.
I, yes, that's it. It's in the advanced treatment plant is making about that much on average and injecting that into the basin at the injection wells. And at which that time it goes into the aquifer for storage and then is budgeted at this at this quarterly water budget group for how it's recovered and used for supply. So there's there's two sides of it. And so the 300 acre feet a month are the injection side of it.
Got it. Now, there is, I think it was proposed and permitted for 3,500 acre feet a year, as I remember. And if that's correct, it looks like it's on target finally.
Yes and no.
Okay.
Yeah, so the operating reserve was filled first. That's about 1,000 acre feet. But by the end of the third year, we need to increase that thousand to 1750, which is approximately a half year supply. So we should be delivering 3,500 to Calam and still producing an additional 250 a year for the first three years to fill up the rest of the operating reserve. So to your point, yes, it's on target now to deliver at least 3,500, you know, 3,600 a year. But we need more than that and and we need redundancy and so forth, which is, you know, why the wells and such are being done. But yeah, we're on target. Certainly with the wells coming online beginning, let's say, October, November, for the next fiscal year, which is the way the water purchase agreement is written, we will be in very good, very good shape.
Thank you.
Any other questions for for Jonathan on this report? Any of them? If not, I'll take a motion.
I'll move for approval.
I got move for approve from Mayor Clyde.
A second.
And second from the vice chair, Paul. Okay, any comments on the second? Roll call vote, please.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Robertson.
Aye.
Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Malik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero. Thank you. GM, what's the next item? You all milked.
Sorry about that. All right, the next item is the midyear budget adjustment. Your CFO, Suresh Prasad will present. I think we have a PowerPoint.
Yeah. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. This is the media budget adjustment for fiscal year 2021. Right around about this time, we look at the first seven months of actual data, how we have done against the original budget and we come up with any adjustments that are needed. Do both the revenue and the expenditures side and waiting for Joel to put up the presentation here. So we can go through a series of slides. What I'm showing on my slides are basically just a snapshot. The actual details are included with the staff note. They all range from exhibits A through F, but we'll go through this slides on a summary level and make sense of what the adjustments are and why they needed. And next slide, please, Joe. So this is what our revenue summary was for the original budget. The total budget was 24.4 million dollars. There were several components, as you can see. The three primary sources to the district's revenue are the water supply charge, property tax and and the user fee. There are some other components that were tied into the original budget to make the budget balance. We had some K V Ford project of a little over $7 million. What that number is, it's a big number, but what that is, is basically any projects that were budgeted in fiscal year 2019, 2020, but did not get completed, those numbers would carry forward into the 2021 budget. Basically, if a project was half completed, we would shift that half portion of the project budget into the next fiscal year. So that's what that carry forward number is. Fund balance was little less than $2 million, about 1.9 million dollars that we needed to balance the budget. And one of the reasons why is because we had a deep injection well on number three, which was slated to be completed in fiscal year 2021. Price tag for that was a little over $3 million. So that project was needed and so we needed about $2 million from our fund reserve to balance the budget. And then you see some other components there, but this is the original budget that the several different components attributed to make it the 24.4 million dollars. Next, please, Joe. This is on the expenditure summary side for the, again, the original 2021 budget. We balanced it to 24.4 million dollars. So the revenue and the expenses were in balance. More than 50% of the budget was used towards the project expenditures and those projects expenditures are, again, as I mentioned, $3 million for the deep injection well. There was the ASR project. Some completion work related to the sleepy hollow project. So all of those projects are in there. Conservation projects are in there as well. Then we had some reimbursement projects and then the personnel cost, the services and supplies, and then some other minor components there that made up to 24.4. Next, please, Joe. So this is where we stand after looking at the seven months of actual data, 24.4 million dollars on the revenue side. We had collected about $8 million or 38% of the budget. Fairly normal when we look at our historical trend for the last couple of years. Our seven month mark is about 38, 39% of the budget. If you look on the expenses side, again, after 24.4 million dollars, we spent 39% of the budget, which was about 6.8 million dollars. And again, that's fairly normal when we look at the trend line for the last several years. So it's it's normal to be where we are at about 40% of the budget through seven months. Next, please, Joe. The next slide. So here's where the adjustments are going to come. The personal cost, which is listed on exhibit 10B. We looked at our temporary personnel budget. We had about $50,000 in there. Due to COVID-19, we're not, our office is not open, so we don't have the need for the temporary personnel in there. This was primarily the data conversion guy who was working with water demand and other divisions, scanning all of the information, converting those data. So all of this year, 2021, we did not hire that temporary personal person. So that budget, we're going to wipe that out. Next, please, please, Joe. On the expenditures, supplies and services side, again, exhibit 10C. None of the travel budget is going to happen due to COVID again. All of staff development cost is going to be pulled out as well. There hasn't been training going on. Meeting costs, we're going to increase that by a little over $10,000 and the reason for that is we've expended our services with the WebEx and Zoom. And so there's the added cost there. A little minor adjustments on the office supplies and then public outreach. Again, that budget's going to get reduced. And transportation cost, we looked at for all divisions, that's going to get reduced. So all in all, the supplies and services line item, we're going to reduce the budget by 34,000. Next, please, Joe. Now, fixed assets, we're going to increase the fixed asset purchase of a truck by 9,000. If you recall, this board did authorize us to go ahead and buy the truck. And I had mentioned at that time that we were going to increase the media budget by 9,000 on the capital assets or fixed assets line item. So that's what that $9,000 increase is. Next, please. This is where majority of the changes are going to happen. Exhibit 10E, project expenditures. And there's a long list of details on the exhibit. I've summarized some of those big ticket items. Pure water Monterey water purchase. So now that we've started selling water to Calam, on the flip side, we are buying water from Monterey. One water, so that's 4.8 million dollars is the actual cost of the water that we've estimated between when we started delivering water to them, the September timeframe. So from September through July, through June 2021, we are expecting to buy water in the amount of 4.8 million dollars, but that amount is going to get billed and collected from Calam. So you'll see in the revenue side, we're making an adjustment for 4.8 million as well. There was about $800,000 in the pure water expansion. But we are going to reduce that by 550,000. We are going to keep 200,000 in there. And as David mentioned, there's a action item later tonight. That's what the $200,000 is going to be for. We had an increase in cost in the pure water Murray well rehab project, 57,000. This project has already been done where the board authorized it. We had advised the board that we were going to be doing a midyear budget adjustment. Line item Calam D cell project. This is the financing structure for the D cell project. We're going to wipe that out for this fiscal year. That's not going to happen this year. Water allocation process. We are eliminating that number as well. That's not going to happen this year. There's an increase in cost for the lost partners alternative analysis sediment study. We are going to be increasing that line item by $95,000. That's an increase in cost. Raptorian erosion projects, when we've combined all the little small items there, that's a reduction of $7,000. Same thing we did on the fisheries program side. There are some pluses, minuses, but the net effect change to the fisheries program is a reduction of 40,000. And then same thing with conservation programs, when we add all of the line items, the changes, the the net amount is a reduction of 63,000. And all of these, when I say, for example, when I say conservation programs, I've narrowed it out. If you go to exhibit 10E, you will see the line items that we care for, what makes that 63,000. So the project expenditure budget is going to increase by 4.2 million dollars, but as you can see, most of that is related to the water purchase cost. Next, please, Joe. So this is what the summary expenditure is. Original budget, as I had mentioned, 24.4 million dollars. We are reducing the personal cost by 40,000, supplies and services gets reduced by 34. And then we are increasing the project expenditure cost by 4.2, fixed asset by 9,000. So the amended budget at midyear will stand for on the expense side will stand at 28.5 million dollars. So that's where the expenditure summary is. Next, please, Joel. Now we'll go through the revenue adjustments and you'll see the revenue adjustments originally was budgeted at 24.4 million dollars. On the, there's two revenue adjustments. One is the user fee. So when we budgeted the user fee back in May of 2020, we were in the midst of COVID-19 and so we didn't know what the impact was going to be done to the agency. So what we did was on a safety level, we had reduced our user fee revenue by about 15% thinking that we could potentially have an impact at that time. Other water districts were showing an impact about anywhere from 10 to 20%. So on a safe side, we said 15% reduction on our budget would basically be a safe, safe net for us. So when we've looked at our seven months of actual collections through January, we've seen that the user fee has not had an impact, had not a decrease of 15%. David mentioned in the previous item, the residential water usage has gone up, the commercial use has gone down, but there's an offset there. And then also there's a rate increase for customers as well. So that basically yielded our user fee at almost the same level where we were last fiscal year. So there's a need to increase that by 750,000. And that's what we are doing. And then pure water Murray sales is I had shown on the previous slide piece. As I had shown, the water purchase cost was 4.8 million dollars. There's the revenue adjustment for 4.8 million dollars. And then the $9,000 that we are increasing our fixed asset by, we are basically what we've done is we've accrued money for that truck that we are buying. And so basically we are pulling money, $9,000 from that accrual, so fixed asset capital reserve account. So that's that $9,000 being pulled in from that reserve fund. And then originally we had anticipated 1.9 million dollars a use in reserves. Well, the good news is with all of these adjustments, we are not going to be using 1.9 million dollars from reserves. We are only going to be using about $500,000 from the reserves for the 2021 budget. So you see there's a reduction of 1.4 million dollars, it says, from fund balance. So basically I'm not going to be pulling 1.9 at the end of the fiscal year. I'm only going to be pulling about $500,000 to balance the 2021 budget. So that's what the amended revenue budget is, 28.5 million dollars, and it's exactly the same as on the expansion side. So we've balanced the budget in essence, basically using the reserve money and all of the other adjustments that you see on the revenue sides. And next, Joel. This is a busy chart, but basically the dark blue one is what our actual user fee collections has been from July all the way through now that by the time we prepared the budget, we only had through January collections, but now we have through February collection. So you can see we've accumulated about three years' worth of data. We now know a little bit more about the user fee collections, but there's still some volatility in some months. So when we look at these data, we average it out, we have kind of like a good picture as to what the user fee collection should be now that we are three and a half years into collections. So this is just a chart to show that we are keeping a tab on the user fee on a monthly basis. We don't get to do that on the property tax and the water supply charge revenue because that's collected through the property tax assessors office. And so we only get the collections, two major ones throughout the year and one minor one at the end of the fiscal year. So we only get the collections three times a year. But we, once those revenues come in, we do monitor those as well. So this is just to let the board know that on our user fee, we do monitor these things on a on a monthly basis. Next, please, Joe.
Chair Edwards, I see Director Riley with his hands raised. Would you like to have him make his comment now towards the end of his presentation?
Please, Dave.
I'm sorry, what was that?
When he's finished.
Okay.
So this is the analysis of reserves. The first column there, right after the description of the reserves, you'll see projected balance at 630, 2020. This is what we had projected for fiscal year ending 1920. When we closed our books for 1920, the actual balance of reserves, you'll see not much change, except when you get to the general operating reserve, you'll see it went from 9.6 to 16 million dollars. And so the total was from 11.4 to 18 million dollars. And the reason for that is when we project expenditures for when we project expenditures for projects and it doesn't complete, basically, that money, that unspent funds get into a general operating reserve. And so that kind of like makes our reserve numbers, general operating reserve numbers go down. But then we do pull those money back into the next fiscal year. So you'll see the fiscal year 2021 budget anticipated about $7 million out of the general operating reserve. So basically, we had at the end of the year, estimated balance to complete the June 30th, 2021 year, the general operating reserve is going to get back to 9.2 million dollars, exactly what it was supposed to be as we had projected last fiscal year. So that, there's not much change there. You'll see there's a line item there, which we had already done with the, the original budget as well, the mechanics bank reserve. $500,000 set aside for that. And then the pension O P E V reserve that we started about three years ago, every year we are pushing about, putting about $100,000 into there. And then some of the other reserves there as well. So all in all, when we complete the year, we are estimating that our reserve balance will stand at about 11.9 million dollars. Next, Joel. These are just the highlights. Go ahead. Then this is the obligations and commitments. Some of the obligations and commitments for the district's future obligations. We have a water allocation process that we think may cost about $400,000. We have a revolver bank debt loan that we are, that will mature in June of 2023, and that balloon payment will be about 3.1 million dollars. So we've started accumulating money for that. Pure MRA reserve, as David mentioned, we need additional 750 acre feet in the next three years. So that 2.5 million dollars is going to be added into three years. We have the pension obligation, 5.5 million dollars, and then O P E V obligations. All in all, our future obligations commitments stands about 15.6 million dollars. And this doesn't include projects, but there may be projects coming online as well. So that could be added to the commitment list as well. Next, Joel. So that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take questions.
Director Riley.
Yeah, through the chair. Thank you. I'm not sure if this is a GM question or Suresh, your question. I, I just want to understand how the flow of money, cost and revenue related to Pure Water Monterey. You saw 4.8 million. This, this is an annual expense that I think, expense and revenue. I just want to make sure that they, that I, I understand, at least, I, I think I understand that the, the district's portion of the expense, in order to get that project funded initially, is included so that we are reimbursed for our fronting of some money for that project?
Not exactly. So the district fronted, oh, Suresh, you're gonna have to bail me out, over 12 million dollars, I believe.
12.8 million dollars.
12.8. We did receive reimbursement for a portion of that. The, the state revolving fund loan did reimburse some of the pre-construction costs. But at the end of the day, we, the district, still had multiple millions, you know, on the order of 8 million plus of pre-construction expenditures that have not been, excuse me, reimbursed, nor are they being reimbursed through the water sales. So that was a, you know, that was a capital investment we made that we are not recovering. Then what you see, that 4.8 million is essentially every year around budget time, we have to get together with Monterey One Water, go through all of the operations, maintenance and financing costs, establish a new company water rate, which will be the rate for the following year. Then CalM gets to review all of the data that went into establishing that rate, and then they will confirm. So then we buy the water from Monterey One Water at basically the, as of right now, we'll just say it's the same rate that we turn around and sell it to CalM for. At some point in the future, the district may have costs that it incurs on an annual basis. So then the company water rate would include the monthly costs incurred by Monterey One Water, plus our own costs. And so the rate that we get paid would cover a little bit of our own expenses, and then the remainder would be the Monterey One Water expenses. So the, what you saw in the expenditures and revenues is all related to the operations and maintenance and annual costs broken down into a monthly invoice. So we get, we get invoiced monthly from Monterey One Water, and we invoice CalM monthly. And as of right now, the two are pretty much a direct offset for each other.
Is it, is it possible to, I, I, I'm just asking for me personally, maybe, and, and maybe the board needs to kind of get up to speed on some of this, but can I, can, I, I, I think there needs to be a little better understanding of how much the district is financing of the project as, as a, as a contribution to the community as compared to what's reimbursed from customer service?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do something like that. We, we did, we did close out, but yeah, there's been enough change. It, it might be nice to see that history as well, just how much was put in. A lot of it was offset with grant monies, as you know. There are some grant monies, we're still waiting to show up, which will have an impact at some point, either to offset the purchase price of water or to reimburse a little bit of our expenditures, as well as Monterey One Water's expenditures. So but yeah, let's, we'll, we'll do something like that.
Okay, then the, the only other addition is, what's the potential arrangement if Monterey, Monterey Pure, Monterey One, I'm sorry, Pure Water Monterey expansion gets approved, approved? What's the structure that that looks like too? Comparison, in comparison to what the existing structure is?
Yeah, we'd like it to be basically the same structure, just an amendment to our existing contract. But that remains, we see, you know, if we can get into negotiation.
Okay, thank you. To be, to, to, to be continued.
TBD, to be determined.
Okay, any other board questions? Any other board questions? All right, Joel, take it out to the public.
Well, do. Okay, so to request to speak on item number 10, please raise your hand from Zoom or dial star nine from your phone. And Director Edwards, I do see here that I have John Tilly on the line that would like to make a public comment. So let me go ahead and allow him to speak. And John Tilly, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel Albert. Thank you very much, board members. Thank for your good work. 24 million is a really large budget, and I would urge you to consider the balance between the projects that are coming through the district, such as the expansion for water Monterey, which is a project worth pursuing, and also the operational costs, so that you have a sustainable entity. Trying to build to a scale of the district being in successive measure J is a risky proposition, and I encourage you to keep an eye on the outcome that may be something that doesn't occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly.
Is there any member of the public who wishes to make public comment on item number 10? Chair Edwards, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll go ahead and return this back to the board.
Thank you, Joel. Any other board questions? Okay, I accept the motion to adopt.
I'll move, I'll move adoption of the mid-year budget.
Okay, George Riley. Director Anderson gave a second.
And Adams.
Okay, any other comments or anything? Okay, just one comment for me. Thank you for the mid-year. I know we are getting ready for the next budget. So we'll probably be doing a timetable, a timeline on that, on, on, for the next budget. Budget, and I want us all involved in that. So no more comments, roll call vote.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Roberson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
Yep.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
The motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero, seven to zero. Thank you. Jim, what's the next item?
Yeah, item 11 is consider approval of district legislative advocacy plan for 2021. This is fairly straightforward. We normally would have approved it at the ledge advocacy committee level and then put it on consent for the whole board. But we failed to agendize it correctly at the legislative advocacy committee, so we made it a discussion item there. And it's coming here to the whole board for approval. It's very similar in format. And it's, it's mostly summary. It's, it doesn't provide a whole lot of meat. It's three pages. Very similar to last year's and the years before that, both of which have worked quite well for us in our joint lobbying effort with Monterey One Water in DC and obviously at the state.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if there's no questions, then our recommendation is approval.
Okay, any questions from, any questions for the general manager? Is none? Joel, let's take it to the public. Thank you.
Right. So if you would like to make public comment on item number 11, now's your opportunity to do so by raising your hand on Zoom or pushing star nine. Director Edwards, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you.
Director Ralph. Dave, I have just one comment about the state strategy. There have been various efforts over the past few years to modify the SEQA law. And I just think that somewhere in here, we ought to alert our consultants in Sacramento to, to, to just be on the lookout for changes in the SEQA law, because it may affect what we're interested in. I, I don't see that specifically here. It may be included in some general statement, but I, I didn't notice it. That's why I wanted to mention.
Yeah, good to know. Yeah, we'll, we'll add that. You should know that one of the attempts to change the SEQA law was us.
Thank you.
But yeah, and it was related to, you know, obviously, utility acquisition, so forth under condemnation, but anyway, we will do that.
And a lot of the SEQA has to do with housing. They want a short circuit SEQA requirements for housing in the state. So that's been on their plate for quite a while.
Yep.
Thank you. One comment, Jim. Can we send our lobbyists to the state board or to another public agency if we have to?
Yes, and we have, we have in the past. When we get to the item, well, we already talked about the housing initiative. Our Sacramento lobbyist was on the phone with the HDC, HCD's legislative liaison yesterday. So we, we do use them that way.
Okay. Maybe at our planning session, we might also build in, if we want to use them other ways.
Yep.
Another way, all right. If no other questions, take a motion.
I'll move approval.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Clyde. Do we have a second? All right, moving along. Okay, I see Vice Chair waving. We give it to her. All right, roll call vote, please.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Roberson.
Aye.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
Yep.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
And Chair Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven to zero, thank you. Next item, Jim.
Item 12 is consider approval of a resolution, of resolution number 2021-02 for the adoption of a property tax transfer agreement. Important thing to know is there's not an actual agreement. The agreement is we pass a resolution, and then later the county passes a resolution. This is related to the annexation of the 58 parcels under the Measure J LAFCO application that was submitted two weeks ago. And a a zero property tax transfer resolution passed by the county will be an item for the application to be deemed complete. So we're starting this step now, so the county can get moving on agendizing their own resolution. The key thing here is we have actually no choices. In April of 1980, the Monterey County Board approved and adopted a formula and policies for determining a property tax transfer as a result of jurisdictional changes, such as annexation for special districts. And those policies provide that no property tax transfer shall occur as a result of the annexations. So this memorializes that, that we understand that. And then when the county passes theirs, it will memorialize that they've recognized that no property tax will transfer as a result of this. So this is a piece of action that we need to take in order to keep moving along with our LAFCO application.
Any more questions? One for me. Hey, have these people been notified this is happening from either us or the county or, or the tax people? I wonder, have they been notified?
No, we are, so we had a call with LAFCO last week. Dave Laredo and I, and that's one of the topics that came up. We will start a notification process shortly. LAFCO indicated. Normally, they take on notification, but their notification will happen later when there's a hearing scheduled rather than sooner. We're, we're operating under the assumption that every one of the property owners in the district knew about Measure J and probably followed it. But that's not enough to say, oh, by the way, we're in the process of annexing you now. And so we will give notification on that issue. And maybe even a little public workshop Zoom meeting, so people can ask questions at that time.
All right, that sounds good. I want to keep everybody informed. I don't want them to have any surprises when that pop up. Director Adams.
Thank you. I just really want to encourage you to have an opportunity for a town hall, a Zoom town hall. I think it would be really important for people who'll have a lot of questions, and it wouldn't be a difficult thing to do, but I would like to see us do it, and I would like to be able to be a part of that as well, since it's in my district. Most, actually, most everything is in my district.
Yeah, I was gonna say. All, all 58 of the property owners are in your district, so our, our choice was just refer them directly to your office or.
All right, any other questions for the general manager? If not, Joel, let's open it up to the public, please.
Yes, if you would like to make public comment on action item number 12, please raise your hand or dial star nine from your phone. Yes, if you would like to make public comment on action item number 12, please raise your hand or dial star nine from your phone. Director Edwards, uh, seeing that there's no hands raised, I'll return this back to the board.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Do we have any motions, seconds? Okay, Vice Chair, raise your hand, she got the first, do I have a second out there? Uh, Director Adams, have a second, any comments on the motion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Roberson.
Yes.
Director Anderson.
Yes.
Director Malik.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries and passes on a vote of seven to zero.
Seven oh, thank you. Next item, Jim.
Yes, excuse me, item 13 is consider approval of amendment five to the Pure Water Monterey Cost Sharing Agreement. This is a, um, the cost, the cost of waiting, uh, to certify the SEIR has resulted in the need to update some of the project description and the sequed document itself. Uh, we have an opportunity here to, uh, fold in a project that will serve two purposes, one, to inform, uh, a better description of the source waters for the SEIR, since that was a, a big point of contention and the public discussion of the document. Um, as well as, uh, when fully complete, which would be after any certification, will serve as a tool for managing the source waters. There are 14 source waters potentially available for Pure Water Monterey expansion. And, um, having a tool from an outside third party may better, uh, define for the public how those waters can be leveraged at any point, at any season, uh, of use. But the initial work in just, um, defining the source waters and confirming source water availability would lend itself to, uh, this SER certification. Uh, legal work from Per- Perkins Coie, um, that's to beef up, again, the, the rights to source waters uh, and some other, uh, work within side the, the SEIR. And then some internal costs, the total is 230,000 as an estimate. Our portion under the traditional cost sharing agreement would be 75%. Uh, or that 172.5, and then with a 5% contingency, uh, that would bring our exposure up to 181,125. That number is inside the, uh, mid-year budget that was, uh, just approved. And, uh, I think we've talked about it earlier, but it would lead to the potential to, uh, for Monterey One Water to vote on certification at their May meeting. And with that, um, I know that we're gonna have some remorse over throwing yet more money at this thing that could have been certified a year ago. Um, I understand that. Um, but a certified SEIR is better than not certifying, so. That concludes my report.
Okay, board members, any questions right now on this side? Uh, go ahead, Mayor Clyde.
Listen, I heard and read the report, Dave, but it, it's all re- related to the delay in the expansion project and the final environmental impact report with Pure Water Monterey is what I'm hearing, what this cost is.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, no other questions? All right, let's take it out to the public.
Uh, for those who would like to make public comment on action item number 13, please raise your hand from Zoom or dial star nine on your phone. And it looks like we have Kristen McCullough. Forgive me if I pronounced your last name incorrectly, um, but let me go ahead and.
And I'm, I'm betting that's actually Mike McCullough.
Okay. Let me go ahead and put this on full screen mode and then at this time, uh, you may present your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's my wife's picture, so sorry about that, Mike McCullough with Monterey One Water. Um, we just, uh, I just wanted to say that, you know, we appreciate the district support financially, uh, throughout these different amendments, uh, we're definitely appreciative, and we hope that, uh, the board will pass this. Uh, if the board does pass it, we are planning to go to our recycled water committee uh, this Thursday, and to the full board on the 29th of March, uh, for the board to approve, uh, this action. And, uh, Dave, I, I, I think we're trying to perform most of this work, uh, within the month to bring it back in April, so it may carry over into May, but the, I think the goal is to try to get it done in one month's time, so. Again, the district and the board of directors. And we're excited that, uh, we're, you know, injecting the water that we are, and it's, it's been a great, uh, community project, we're proud to be a part of it.
All right, thank you.
All right, the next speaker, um, is dialing in, and their last three digits of their phone number is 312. At this time, uh, you may present your comment when you're.
Yeah, yes, hello, Margaret Ann Coppernall, I just want to say, uh, I think your, your board is phenomenal, and you're doing a fabulous job, and anything that can be done to advance the needle for the SEIR is fantastic, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and just for the record, uh, could you state your name again?
Oh, Margaret Ann Coppernall.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Susan S. Uh, Susan, when you're ready, please present your comment.
Thank you, Joel, thank you, board, um, and Dave Stoltz. I just wanted to say I support this, but I understand and join others in the disappointment we've had and the extra money that's had to have been spent in regard to this issue because of the inability of, uh, passage last year, and so anything that would tighten it up, make it more, uh, doable, more understandable, and more, um, credible, I think should be supported, so as much as I hate to spend all that money, I do support you doing this, and I applaud you on hanging in there with this project because it's so important for us, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Anna Thompson. Anna, when you're ready, uh, please present your comment.
Yes, uh, I just wanted to say I agree 100% with the prior two speakers, Susan and, uh, Margaret Ann. I think we needed to proceed as fast as we can with, so that it would be certified. And, uh, I'm also very disappointed that it was not certified a year ago, but let's make sure they get certified, certified this time. So thank you so much for all your work, and I really very appreciate all of everything, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair Edwards, uh, looks like there's no more hands raised, so I'll return this back to the board.
Thank you. Okay, back to the board, any other questions for the GM? Okay, Director Amy.
Just, just a clarification, uh, I think I know the answer, but that's the, um, 75% is a formula that we've used with, uh, Monterey One Water, is that right?
Correct, um, and it, it stems a little bit from the realization that this is primarily a potable water project. And the wastewater fee collection mechanism under proposition 218 really shouldn't, uh, be paying for water supply. So, uh, Paul Schudo's predecessor came from a 50/50 understanding and asked if we could foot the principal amount 75%, which, um, because it's water supply, we agreed to do, um, we're mo- and, and we set the water supply charge, uh, which we collected, so we're just going over, um, based on the provision of water supply services, so it's in our wheelhouse. Which is also why the state revolving fund loan, uh, was so important because the Monterey One Water would not have been in a, a strong position to establish rates and charges um, for a water supply project in excess of what they've spent to date, so. But it's left a number of board members through time, you know, a little unhappy because it feels like we're spending more and we don't have ownership, uh. But, you know, that's, that's the way pulling together and working on a joint project works. You know, we get what we're looking for, permanent water supply. And they, uh, you know, are leveraging existing facilities to reduce wastewater flows, and, uh, it was kind of a, um, multi-benefit project for quite a number, not just our two agencies, but a number of agencies.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or the? I'd like to say, let's get the motion out of the way, I'll make a motion to approve this, and I'll speak on the second.
Yeah, I'd like to speak also.
Okay, uh, uh, motion made by Chair, second by Director Amy. Okay, on the second, go ahead there, George.
Um, I'd just like to remind people that, um, um, the Pure Water Monterey Expansion Project, uh, is environmentally, um, superior. It, uh, avoids a, um, serious, uh, community conflict. Uh, an invasion of, uh, uh, water sources in Marina. Uh, and it's a quick track, it's a quicker track to a water supply, and it's a less expensive track to a water supply. So I, I just want to remind everybody that what we're doing as a district is facilitating not just the water supply, but various community side and environmental side and cost, uh, related advantages to the entire community, I, I just want to remind people that. And I'm really glad to see that, uh, in the, uh, in the, uh, details of the agreement is that Monterey One Water is expected to certify the SEIR. I'd like to see, that's all.
Okay, thank you, any other board comments? Okay, comments from the chair. You know, I'm gonna approve this, but I, I, I have reservations because I'm one of the ones that's saying we putting a, a lot in this and, and don't have that much say. It's a lot of money this district is putting in. One of my other concerns is Cal A and put money in. To tell you the truth, Cal A and put up, I think, $350,000 in, in this, correct me if I'm wrong. Now, they put 355, 350,000 for that bypass pipeline. I hope we are not doing this just for them to take out that bypass pipeline. I hope we are not spending this type of money. Because as I heard in water supply, if the bypass go through, we expect a water supply to go with it too, at their expansion. So I hope both boards really think about this. Because I don't want a private for-profit water agency company to take something out that the public is really paying for. We paying the bulk of the, for this project. So I appreciate the board approving this, I'll prove it with it, but let's watch. Let's watch it carefully, we expect a water supply project, not somebody to go in there and take a piece out of because they paid for it. That's all I have to say, I call for the, the, the question now. Go ahead, roll call vote, please.
Director Riley.
Aye.
Director Adams.
Aye.
Director Roberson.
Aye.
Director Anderson.
Aye.
Director Malik.
Aye.
Vice Chair Paul.
Yes.
Chair Edwards.
Yes.
Motion carries and passes unanimously.
Thank you, seven oh. Okay, we are at information items, any board members have any information items they want pulled or anything? Okay, Jim, do you have anything?
Nope, I am ready to go.
Okay, uh, Mr. Laredo, you still there, you, you have anything?
Thank you, and have a wonderful evening.
All right, just want to make sure y'all still were here.
Right here.
Good night, and thank you all for your participation, and, uh, audience, good night. Be a journey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.